Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Land Use Meeting to Order. It's Commissioner White on the phone on yet? I don't see him. Commissioner White?
I do not see him on the session yet, sir.
Okay, well, I don't have a flag in front of me and I don't know if we have one on the screen or not, but will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation? Just make believe with flags in front of you. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our gracious and heavenly Father, we are so thankful that you allow us to come together today, even though it's virtually, to work for the betterment of this great county that we love so much. Father, we ask you be with us today as we make decisions that you regulate our minds and humble our hearts, that we can do the best we possibly can under these circumstances. Father, we ask that as we go through the day, we make decisions that will sometimes not sit well with others, but let us all know that we all can be on one accord because we all believe that we're doing the right thing for this county. Father, we ask you be with the first responders that are putting their lives on the line for us each and every day, especially those that are in the hospital rooms taking care of those that have been touched by this virus and suffering. We ask you to put your healing hands on them and heal their bodies and bring them back to a healthy life. Father, we ask that at the end of our day, that when we return to our homes, we find everything safe and sound. These are our blessings. We ask you your righteous and holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Mr. Moretta, changes to the agenda?
Good morning, Board members. Joe Moretta.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Moretta, hold on. Need a roll call. You're right, I'm sorry. Please call the roll.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Uh, uh, Smith, here, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, White?
I'm here.
Thank you. Have a forum.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Moretta, changes to the agenda?
Morning Commissioners. Joe Moretta, Development Services for the record. Commissioners, we have two changes on the agenda. One is found on A1, is item A1, personal appearance 20-0651. The application has been withdrawn by the applicant. The next item is A2, PRS 20-0652. This application has been withdrawn by the applicant. That takes care of all the changes to the agenda.
Move the changes, Commissioner.
Commissioner Merman, the second?
Second, Commissioner Kemp.
Second by Commissioner Smith, I'm sorry, Smith, Kemp, to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move, Commissioner Merman.
Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner Kemp.
Second by Commissioner Kemp, to approve the consent agenda and the discussion. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, if anyone is listening and you had an item on the consent agenda, your item has been approved. We have no need for an oath today because we don't have any testimonies that will be given. So we're going to now move into the public hearing on the vacation of rights of ways and easement and plats. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Commissioner, before we get started, I would note that there was an addendum forwarded last night that does have a staff item related to the hearings. I should have noted that as part of the changes, so I apologize for that.
Okay. Okay, we gotta go back and take up the changes to the agenda. We have a motion to reconsider the vote by which the change agenda was passed.
So move.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to reconsider the vote by which the changes agenda was passed. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll on the motion to reconsider.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Moretta, you want to bring that up now?
The staff item or are we going to move to vacating?
No, no, the staff item, we gotta reconsider the changes to the agenda.
The staff item that...
Go ahead.
The staff item is an item that's going to be presented by staff on the status of the hearings, ZHM and the Little Hohearings, and I believe the Board of Commissioner Land Use Meeting as well.
The changes.
Most about Commissioner Merman.
Second by Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White, to approve the change to the agenda and the discussion. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Yes?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
If there's anyone that's confused, let me explain to you what happened. We approved the changes to the agenda originally. Mr. Moretta then came back and said there was something that was omitted, which is a off-the-agenda item for verbal update of zoning here in Master and Land Use Hearing Officer. We had to go back and have a motion to reconsider the changes to the agenda by which it passed. We did that. But it went back to the change to the agenda. Mr. Moretta then added the additional zoning hearing master and land use officers item to the agenda. We had a motion to approve that. We did, and now we're moving forward. Just want to make sure we understand that. Now, Mr. Moretta, C1.
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to C1. C1 through C8 will actually be vacating petitions that will be presented and responded to by the Real Estate Department. I believe Carrie Allen, the Real Estate Department, will probably be making the bulk of the presentations. Now, I was running over the real estate at this point. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Carrie Allen, Geospatial and Land Acquisition Services Department. I am going to share my screen so that we can view the location maps for each item. Item C1 is vacate ID V20-0003. This is a petition by Richard Gray and Jennifer Clark Gray to vacate a portion of a 10-foot-wide platted utility easement lying within Lot 15, Block 14, within the plat of Henderson Road subdivision, Unit Number 4. This was recorded in Plat Book 47, Page 59 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. This request is made for the purpose of resolving the encroachment of a slide built by the petitioners in 2004 into a portion of the utility easement. The proposed vacate area is located south of Winding Oak Drive, west of Henderson Road, and north of West Linebaugh Avenue in Tampa, and consists of approximately 150 square feet. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the utility easement. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I don't have anyone that has signed up for this particular item. Again, is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, what's your pleasure?
Second.
Who made the motion?
Merman. Commissioner Merman.
Most about Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. In a discussion, seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman? Commissioner Merman? Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero.
Okay, I think we lost Commissioner Merman. I don't see, oh, she's back on now. Okay. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. That will bring us to Item C2 on the agenda. That would be vacating petition V20-0004. The Real Estate Department, again, will make this presentation and be available for response.
Okay.
Good morning. Item C2 is V20-0004. This is a petition by Bullfrog Creek Mitigation Bank LLC to vacate portions of platted unimproved rights-of-way within the plat of Morris Park Farms, recorded in Plat Book 1, Page 122 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. This request is made in furtherance of Bullfrog Creek Mitigation Bank LLC granting a conservation easement to the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The proposed vacate area is located east of intersection of 19th Avenue Northeast and US Highway 301 in Wamama, and the vacate area consists of approximately 662,112 square feet. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of the portions of rights-of-way. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. This is a public hearing. I have one person signed to speak on this. Jaclyn Perez?
Yes, this is Jaclyn Perez. I'm an attorney. I actually represent the petitioner, and I'm simply available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perez. That closes the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move up, Perval. Can I ask her a question? I got completely cut out after the, my system went dead. Did everybody else's go too?
No, no.
I lost it. I lost it as well, Commissioner.
Pardon me?
This is Joe Moretta. I lost it as well. I was down for a couple of minutes myself. I had to get reback, back on the system.
Okay, because I would, I think I made a motion on the first item, but then they just went dead, so that's what happened.
Would you like to record your vote on the first item?
Absolutely. Record my vote. They'll say yes.
Okay. Clerk, you hear that?
Yes, sir. I'll edit the vote.
Okay, all right, now, we're back, we're back on C2. What's your pleasure?
Move up, Perval. Commissioner Merman.
Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White to approve item C2. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta, you recognize?
That brings us to Item C3, Commissioners. That will be vacating petition V20-0006. This will also be presented by the Real Estate Department. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, are you presenting this one?
Yes, I am. Thank you. This is a petition by Dennis Griffin to vacate a portion of a 15-foot-wide platted utility easement lying within Lot 29, Block 1, within the plat of Nita Estates, as recorded in Plat Book 46, Page 7 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. This request is made for the purpose of constructing a garage storage structure on the petitioner's property. The proposed vacate area is located north of Nita Drive, east of Elise Marie Drive, south of State Road 574 in Seffner, and consists of approximately 722 square feet. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the utility easement. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. This is a public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak on this particular item. What's your pleasure?
Move up, Perval.
Most about Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White to approve item C3. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to Item C4, vacating petition V20-0009. The Real Estate Department will also present this item as well. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, you recognize?
Thank you. This is a petition by Emmanuel Bias to vacate a portion of a 7.5-foot-wide platted utility easement lying within Lot 23, Block B, within the plat of Lake Morley Terrace Estates, Unit Number 1. This plat was recorded in Plat Book 35, Page 74 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. This request is made for the purpose of resolving an encroachment of a structure which was constructed into a portion of the utility easement in 2014 by the petitioner. The proposed vacate area is located south of Barris Avenue and east of Fillmore Road in Tampa, and consists of approximately 195 square feet. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the utility easement. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. I have no one signed to speak on item C4, so that closes the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move up, Perval.
Most by Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White to approve item C4, and seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to C5, vacating petition V20-0010. The Real Estate Department, again, will present this item as well. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, you recognize?
Thank you. This is a petition by CPAT Enterprises LLC to vacate a portion of a 10-foot-wide platted drainage easement lying within lots 2 and 3, Block 4, within the plat of Byers Riverview Acres, as recorded in Plat Book 33, Page 4 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. The petitioner is also granting a replacement drainage easement along the southern 10 feet of the property boundary. This request is made for the purpose of resolving the encroachment of a residential home, which is currently under construction into a portion of the drainage easement. The proposed vacate area is located east of Formby Street and south of Riverview Drive in Riverview, and consists of approximately 3,175 square feet. Reviewing departments, agencies, and utility providers have raised no objections to this request. However, Public Works Review is conditioned upon the acceptance of the replacement drainage easement along the southern boundary of petitioner's property to replace the easement the petitioner is requesting to vacate. The new drainage easement consists of approximately 3,400 square feet. Staff recommends approval of this petition request and acceptance of the drainage easement.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I have one speaker signed up to speak on this. Mr. Cornelius Pate?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, this is Cornelius Pate. I just asked that you approve this petition. As you can see, I'm just moving it to the south end of my, of the property. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Merman to approve item C5. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to Item C6, vacating petition V20-0011. The Real Estate Department will again present this item. Thank you.
Good morning. This is a petition by Colonnade Crosstown LLC, Charles David and Suzanne Fuller, to vacate a portion of a platted 30-foot-wide right-of-way lying between tracks 10, 11, 14, and 15 within the plat of South Tampa, as recorded in Plat Book 6, Page 3 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. This request also includes that 30-foot-wide right-of-way, which is lessed out of Folio 44653000, all known as 90th Street. The petitioner's desire to vacate the area to allow for the development of a planned development project. The proposed vacate area is located north of and perpendicular to Causeway Boulevard, west of US Highway 301 in Tampa, and consists of approximately 40,473 square feet. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the right-of-way. However, Tampa Land Company, Frontier Florida LLC, and Charter Communications, Inc., each request the reservation of a utility easement over the proposed vacate area due to facilities located and maintained therein. The City of Tampa Water and Wastewater Departments have also requested the reservation of a utility easement over a portion of the proposed vacate area due to facilities located and maintained therein. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We have two people signed up to speak on this issue. First is Mr. David Smith.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Smith, Stern Tewa Miller, representing the applicant. This vacation is part of the corporate campus PD that was approved not too long ago by the board. This provides for our opportunity to secure this roadway that leads into the manufacturing and distribution facility, and is wholly within the ownership of the applicant. The Fuller property was closed on and is also owned by Colonnade Crosstown. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Joe Carroll.
This is Joe Carroll. I'm director at Colonnade Crosstown. I'm also here to just answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's closes the public hearing. Motion by whom was that?
Merman.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by... Sir.
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White. Seeing no discussion on this item, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. That brings us to Item C7, vacating petition V20-0014. The Real Estate Department, again, will present this item. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, you recognize?
This is a petition by Michael Deeds to vacate a portion of a platted 5-foot-wide general public easement lying within Lot 28, Block 2, within the plat of Everina Homes First Edition, as recorded in Plat Book 36, Page 36 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. This request is made for the purpose of resolving an encroachment of a structure which was constructed into a portion of the easement. The proposed vacate area is located south of South Everina Circle, west of Kingsway Road, and east of Parsons Avenue in Brandon, and consists of approximately 375 square feet. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the utility easement. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. There was no one signed to speak on this issue, so that closes the public hearing. What's your pleasure? Most by Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White to approve item C7. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to the final vacating petition of the day. This is Item C8, vacating petition V20-0017. The Real Estate Department will again present this item. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, you recognize?
Thank you. This is a petition by Stuart Nevilles to vacate a portion of a platted 7.5-foot-wide utility easement. This is lying within Lot 67, Block 10, within the plat of Country Place, Unit 3A, recorded in Plat Book 50, Page 1 of the Public Records of Hillsborough County. This request is made for the purpose of constructing a screened pool enclosure on the petitioner's property. The proposed vacate area is located south of Bullet Court, east of Pennington Road, north of Ehrlich Road in Tampa, and consists of approximately 219 square feet. The petition was routed to appropriate departments and agencies, and there are no objections to the vacation of this portion of the utility easement. Staff recommends approval of this petition request.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. There was no one signed to speak on item C8, so that closes the public hearing. What's your pleasure?
Move up, Perval. Merman.
Most by Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner Kemp.
To approve item C7. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta?
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to Item J1. This is a commissioner item. J1 to approve utility line connections consisting of water and wastewater into the Waterbrook subdivision. Adam Gormley is going to present this item.
Mr. Gormley, you recognize? Mr. Gormley?
Sorry.
Yeah.
I'm muted now. Thank you. The request before you is to have the board authorize the extension of a wastewater force main to serve the Waterboro subdivision on Van Dyke Road. The force main is currently located approximately 200 feet to the east, serving two churches that currently exist. The Waterboro subdivision plus one additional lot that has been already built on exists on approximately 40 acres and consists of one existing and seven proposed units. The area is within a wellhead protection area and is at the headwaters of the Brooklyn Creek Preserve. The authorization requested would be specific to the Waterboro subdivision plat and the one existing lot as depicted in your backup. If this were approved, what the outcome would be is there would be an elimination of one existing septic tank and the avoidance of installing seven new septic tanks in a wellhead protection area while supporting a development pattern that is well below the density for which it is zoned. This, this authorization would be limited to this specific fact pattern and to the subdivision as laid out in the background. Any changes or any changes in density or anything of that nature would not be captured by this authorization. It would be specific to this particular project. We have coordinated with Public Utilities Department, and they are supportive of this, of this concept and are, are able to serve the project. and are able to serve the project with the minor, with the short line extension to serve it. I am available for any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gormley, and I see no questions. What's your pleasure?
No approval.
Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner White.
Second by Commissioner White. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll. I'm sorry, Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you, and I'm going to support this item. I'd just like to put some reasons for making this exception on the record so that the record is clear that this does not set a precedent for extension of urban services outside the urban service area boundary. It's a clear exception to our general rules and policies. The provision of utilities here is not enabling development that would not otherwise happen. And as Mr. Gormley pointed out, any change in the density would not just automatically get to tap into more water in this place. So more importantly, a primary reason for me that this is an exception is because of the water issues and the possible impacts to drinking water as well as the environment. It's a wellhead protection area, which involves our drinking water resources. There is, it's a high sinkhole area indicating that there is a danger of pollution from septic tanks if we were not to allow them to tap into the wastewater system. And that pollution, you know, could conceivably contaminate the aquifer due to the high sinkhole area. There are nearby water resources. Brooker Creek, in fact, is right across the street. That watershed is right across, and there are lakes in this high groundwater area. So contamination is an issue. The high groundwater area itself means that the contamination is an issue, and it also means that if they had to do septic, it would have to be on mounded areas. So finally, one question I always ask with developers wanting us to provide sewer service outside the urban service area is, well, why do they get to jump the queue and cut in front of the one hundred and twenty other communities we have inside the urban service area who are all waiting patiently for us to convert them? And in this case, there is a good answer to that question. All of these water issues I mentioned means that if they did go ahead on septic without us providing the sewer services in this area, we would just have to come back and be prioritizing them in our list of septic systems to convert to sewer projects anyway, as we do septic to sewer conversion. So next five to ten years, we will be having to convert them, so we might as well let them connect now and save everyone that trouble and expense later. So thank you for letting me clarify all that for the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Smith, for bringing this forward. I think it's critically important that we recognize sustainable goods, sustainable practices, and this is an exception that's necessary to continue that pattern. I also hate for whether it's individuals, developers, or the government paying for anything twice. It doesn't seem to make sense, and as we have a big challenge as far as changing out the conversion from septic to sewer, this makes total sense, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wasn't going to say anything, but in light of the comments, I just want to say I'm actually the commissioner that brought this forward. And Keystone, I mean, Keystone's plan speaks extensively about protecting the area's water resources, and that's, you know, the main reason why staff supports the item because it will reduce the proliferation of septic tank systems. As stated, it is in the wellhead protection area. And as Commissioner Overman just stated, all costs involved in designing, constructing, you know, will be borne by the property owner. And again, this is not a rezoning. The property will be developed with single-family homes either way. It's just a matter of, it's an info project. It's just a matter of if it will be on septic tanks or not. So I appreciate the support on the item.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, can you hear me?
You're up. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. I'll be quick. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, again, for doing a wonderful job of drawing out all the reasons that this should be approved and putting them on the record. I really, it's much appreciated.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item J one. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Moreta.
Thank you, Commissioners. This brings us to the addendum status of the hearings. Mr. Gormley is going to present this item as well. Thank you.
Mr. Gormley, you recognize.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, I wanted to provide an update to you on the status of our ZHM and Luho public hearings. As you may have seen from several communications I've sent to you, we have been trying to get these hearings back going. We do have quite an extensive backlog of cases between the two hearing processes and PRSs. We have well over a hundred that are backed up in the queue. We have been operating and planning to have both virtual and in-person hearings. We are, we have partnered with HTV and with Facilities Team to establish a location for the hearings, which is going to be at the Saunders Library on Nebraska, where we would have a virtual participation available through WebEx, the same software being used for this meeting. And we are providing instructions through the notice on how people can participate virtually as well as how they could submit documents in advance if they choose to participate virtually. We have also very thoughtfully set out the space at Saunders Library. There is spacing of chairs, social distancing can be maintained. There is screening that will be done of participants entering the room. We have also set up a separate auxiliary room for people who masks would be required to participate. However, if people are unable or unwilling to wear masks, we have a separate room set up that would have people entering one at a time and separated from the main hearing room to allow them the opportunity to give testimony. We are very comfortable that we've taken the steps necessary to ensure that these hearings go off safely. However, what we cannot control is the incidence of positive COVID tests and the rises that we have been experiencing. It's for that reason that we had found it necessary to cancel the July ZHM and Luho hearings, which were July twentieth and July twenty-second. We do have several other hearings that are already scheduled and noticed. Those are August third and fourth and August seventeenth and eighteenth. We have also scheduled to have the August twelfth BOCC meeting recommence hearing PRS minor modification applications, which will entail a public hearing. And it was our intent to have that meeting with the same virtual and in-person participation options. A little bit of background, the reason that we are doing both of those is for due process reasons. The board heard a presentation in April on some of the limitations that were deemed necessary or some of the limitations for having virtual-only hearings. From a due process standpoint, the hearing structure that we have put together is designed to fit within that guidance that we received. I wanted to share this with the board as we, you know, do have a fair amount of cases that are backed up and are taking every effort that we can to move those into the hearing process while at the same time, first and foremost, making sure that we are not compromising anybody's health or safety. So at this point, we are planning to proceed with the August third and fourth Luho and ZHM public hearings. And I'm available for any questions you may have or any comments or guidance the board may wish to give on that.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley, for that explanation. Appreciate it very much. Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Mr. Gormley, I'm not sure whether or not the items can be, you know, broken up and perhaps some of those deferred till September or something to that effect. But, you know, I'd really like to see items from East and South County. I'd like to see the hearings for those held somewhere out in the eastern or southern portion of the county. We have plenty of large facilities out there. Even if it has to be in an area that's sort of centrally located to eastern and southern Hillsborough County, like the Brandon area or something like that, I'd love to hear the other commissioners' thoughts on that. But, you know, I'd very much like to see those held out here in this neck of the woods to the greatest extent possible. And while I'm here, while I have the floor, Mr. Gormley, so are we going to have a meeting on August eleventh, the BOCC, or is it just August twelfth?
Yes, Commissioner, I think I misstated the date. I misstated it. It's August eleventh. I was mistaken about August twelfth. August eleventh is the next scheduled land use meeting, and we are preparing that to be a virtual and in-person hearing.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I saw another hand.
Smith?
Commissioner Smith, you recognize.
Thank you. I agree with White. If this can, you know, if we can find a silver lining here and get something good out of this reorganization, we might find an opportunity to meet in areas that is more convenient, that are more convenient to the parties involved, particularly the communities involved. And that would be, it would be a good opportunity to test that and try that out. So I hope we can. My other comment is that during this time of virtual meetings or different kinds of hearings, I think we should make extra effort to be flexible with the citizen and community participation. It's hard enough for them, as in our system as it is, to participate where things are normal and there's a history of how to jump through all the hoops. But as they're trying to sort out how to participate in new ways and new venues and new times, let's, my thought is for us to all be very flexible about the sign-in deadlines and the little requirements to make sure that everybody is allowed to speak and have their say. Thank you.
Commissioner Hagan, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. From my perspective, the industry's already faced significant challenges, and we're only compounding the issue by delaying hearings for five or six months. So the question I've got for Adam, because I'm a little bit confused, is the delay that we've experienced due to due process and legal issues or administrative and process concerns?
Let me take a shot at answering that. The reason for the delays in the hearings was over concern about having people participating in person and gathering in the hearing rooms. The reason that we're having to have people gather in the hearing rooms is to satisfy the identified due process challenges that the board heard in April. I will say, from a process standpoint, we have worked very closely with John Muller and his team. I can assure the board that we took extensive steps to provide a safe environment, providing for social distancing, spacing out chairs in the room at the Saunders Library that that has an entrance right off of the parking lot. So we chose a facility that has easy access, has ease of moving and staging people. We rehearsed both the logistics on the floor with stand-in public attendees. We rehearsed with HTV for the tie-in with the with the audio side HTV. And again, went through what-ifs for an auxiliary room for people without masks and even what we do with people who don't pass the screening. So I think that we're very thoroughly prepared, and if it would be helpful, John Muller is on the line and can present some of the visuals of what we had prepared for that hearing room so the board can see the space, see how we have said.
The question I really have is I question if the due process concerns are legitimate. In other words, what are other counties, what have other counties done? Do they share these same concerns? It's my impression that not every county is operating in this fashion.
Let me say this. This is Commissioner Miller. Hold on, hold on. Let me say this. I met with staff on this, Commissioner Hagan and others, concerning these hearings. And believe me, staff and Mr. Miller had laid out the library to the best that they possibly could to try to make sure that we were protecting people from the COVID nineteen disease. I don't know what the other counties are doing, but after talking to them and looking at the numbers, it was a decision made that we will bring it to you all to decide that we were not going to do those meetings this month, this week. And the reason being is this, and I presented this to the staff and they understood. When the governor took us out of Phase One into Phase Two, which was June the fifth, we were averaging forty-nine cases a day, forty-nine, okay? Starting June sixteenth, the numbers started to go up, and as of yesterday, July twentieth, we are have more now because of the mere fact we started taking these numbers back in March. But from June sixteenth to July twenty-second, we have twenty thousand one hundred and eighty new cases in thirty-four days. That goes to five hundred and ninety-four new cases a day, from forty-nine to five ninety-four. And after the discussion, we felt that it was no way that we could have a hearing and make sure that every person that came in there was protected. They laid everything out, but that was the main reason why. Because we want to make sure that we are not jeopardizing the health and well-being of anyone that came in, be it the staff, be it whomever was coming in the door. That was the reason for it. Now, what other counties are doing, I'm going to ask Mr. Gormley or someone else to answer that question, but I'm talking about Hillsborough County, where we are that question, but I'm talking about Hillsborough County, where we are now either the third or the fourth every day in cases, but flip-flop between us and Palm Beach County. That's the reason why. Mr. Gormanly, you want to ask the other part of the question that Commissioner Hagan asked?
Commissioners, I'm aware that there are other jurisdictions that are doing this, perhaps slightly different. I know that Pasco County has a somewhat of a hybrid where they're having people participate virtually and making kiosks available in the lobbies of their government centers for people to participate if they don't have access to communication media technology, some audio-video capabilities. I'm aware that the city of Tampa was doing them all in person. It's my understanding that they are looking at other options for other ways to do that. I have been contacted by representatives of there, of the city, to ask what we were doing. So I don't know that I can tell you what all other jurisdictions are doing. I do know that what we have put together in terms of a hearing would address the guidance that we've given about the limitations on how we can and cannot hold hearings for due process purposes.
Okay, again, I understand the importance of protecting the health and safety of our citizens. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about legal, due process interpretation of the law that I believe could possibly be inaccurate. I'm interested in knowing what other counties are doing as far as holding meetings virtually, and if we can do that. I don't know about you guys, but five or six months without having land use hearings is just completely unacceptable. I'm looking for solutions here, protecting the health and safety of our citizens. So I'd like staff or the county attorney's office to look into what other counties are doing as far as holding these hearings. And again, from a legal, due process perspective, not a health and safety perspective, it's two different issues. So I want to make sure I'm crystal clear about that. So I'm going to make a motion that we just have county attorney's office and staff look into that and come back to us with what other counties are doing.
That's a motion about Commissioner Hagan. Is there a second? Who seconded it?
Merman.
Second by Commissioner Merman. Is there a discussion on the motion? Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Miller, I had my hand raised.
So did I.
Okay, are you addressing the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner White, you recognize?
I'm going to go ahead and support the motion. I don't see any harm in asking the county attorney's office to research this, but I just want to say that, you know, we don't know whether or not those other counties that may have moved forward with some different models are going to end up embroiled in a bunch of litigation and perhaps not be on solid legal footing. So I would just ask the county attorney's office to keep that in mind as they conduct their research, that, you know, I'm fine with moving forward with a virtual model, provided that we're on solid legal footing. I don't want to end up in court a bunch if we take steps forward too prematurely.
This was Beckon.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
You want to say something toward this?
Yes, actually, I would. Thank you very much. Just to remind, the meetings that were scheduled for this week were ready to go, and there were no legal concerns. We have already researched what many other counties are doing and are keeping a close eye on that. The bottom line is that the remaining due process concern has to do with how you handle those citizens who don't have access to communications media technology and how you allow them to have access to the process. And so that's the last remaining thing that requires a physical location. And what some have, you know, we, our staff had a plan for how to handle that at the Saunders Library. And Pasco uses a kiosk system, which is another way of allowing the staff or the citizens to appear in a physical location if they don't have access to the equipment. There are a number of different hybrid models, but the only due process concern remaining is how do you address that? And so it would appear that there are a number of safety steps that can be taken to try to mitigate as much as possible the health concerns. But from a legal standpoint, we have gotten, not gotten rid of, but we no longer have the governor's order. If you recall, when we did our memo back in April, the governor had an order outstanding that said if you were over 65, you shall stay home. And that also posed an additional due process concern. That order is no longer in effect, so now it's just a matter of how do we accommodate those who can't participate with communications media technology? And there are a number of ways to do that. And what our research has shown is that the vast majority of counties in the state of Florida utilize a hybrid model where there is both virtual and then an aspect that's physical. Some counties never stop meeting physically. That's just a fact, that some have always continued to meet physically, and so this issue never really arose for them. And then we have found one county that seems to be proceeding in a completely virtual model, but we probably need to do a little more research into that to see if that would be something that we believe would be legally sound. If I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Commissioner Merman to the motion.
Thank you. And actually, I was going to make a similar motion, because when I had my briefing yesterday, I asked staff, what are the other counties doing? And said, have some research ready to be presented today so we can hear it. I know about Pasco County, and I know there are other counties that are going ahead with business. I, like Commissioner Miller, am very concerned to keep people safe. But I think that we're going to face some real problems if we don't go forward with some kind of hearing that can be done safely with people's safety in mind. I think it can be done, I mean, we're making our offices safe right now. I don't know what, somebody needs to put their phone on mute. But anyway, I think there's severe economic concerns that are going to happen if we don't get these land use hearings going, and that's loss of tax revenue for this county. These business owners who want this business, they are losing millions of dollars in being able to get their business up and running, or their property, whatever they're going to do with it. So I'm in complete support of this and think we need to move forward in August. I hope at the next meeting, I know Commissioner Hagan, if you had a timeline, but I think the next meeting, when we get back together as a commission, there needs to be a plan in front of us that we can approve to make sure citizens are safe, but we can continue these hearings. Did you have a timeline on there, Commissioner Hagan?
As soon as practical. How's that?
Okay. As soon as possible probably would have been more appropriate, but no, I'm in full support and think we have to move forward. You know, this county's going to see huge economic concerns in their budget, and this is just one element. I think we can do it safely enough. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith to the motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you. A couple of things I'm wrestling with as I consider whether to support this motion or not is, in the first place, our county is different than other counties in terms of safety and danger and vulnerability to COVID. Our numbers are higher than other counties. So just to say some other county is doing it this way does not mean that we should be doing it this way. And I'm very confident that our health officials and our emergency staff, everybody from Mr. Dudley to Dr. Holt, has been working overtime, providing up-to-the-minute data that is being considered as our county considers how best to hold all kinds of meetings, public hearings on many, on all our issues, and how to open and close various things safely. But, you know, it's great to look at how other counties are doing it, but it's important to then come back to how we should do it in light of our experts. I'm also very confident that our county attorney and our land use attorney, our attorneys in the development services department have been working very hard to make this work for everyone, all parties, from the citizens to the developers, and yet keep everybody safe. I have confidence that they are doing the best we can and that, you know, the governor's orders for allowing virtual meetings have not been lifted yet. And yet we're already proceeding to an August 11 hearing. I mean, I think we're doing the best we can. So if I could just ask to have the motion restated before we vote, I think I also want to say that, as I said before, it's very important that as we change up these systems and try to figure out some completely different virtual system, we make sure that the public is easily able to participate, whether they are in a 70-year-old person with asthma and feeling very vulnerable, or whether they are, you know, feeling less vulnerable, that everybody is accommodated and easily able to have access to these public hearings. I know this has been an issue, particularly in getting public participation in the South County areas where some areas don't even have that. So I would be very careful about, you know, just trying to open up virtual hearings because we're in a hurry, or somebody's in a hurry. So if I could have the motion restated before we vote, that would be helpful to me, but I'm not, I'm not hearing any. What I don't want to do is have staff get the direction from us that we want to push them in some way other than what their professional experts have worked out between the health experts and our legal experts. I don't want to push them with a political agenda. I want to make sure that our decisions are being made for our county and what's best health-wise and legally, as Commissioner White said. Thank you.
Commissioner Overman to the motion.
I think a lot of the points that I was going to say matter, and have been said, but what I do want to do is thank staff for looking for creative ways of getting this done. We mentioned that there are certain areas of the county where internet's not available and people want to participate, and setting up a satellite participation module kind of arrangement could make our hearings go forward. We are effectively having very high presentation meetings in other ways. And for example, for the emergency policy committee, those documents are prepared and provided and distributed and shown during those meetings largely when the materials are made available half an hour before the meeting. Our hearings don't work that way. We typically get the information well ahead of time, and allowing for someone to participate means they have to sign up to participate. So I have every confidence that staff has thought this through. There may be other creative ways to address Commissioner White's concern, as I have as well, but I do appreciate the necessity to keep our citizens and our staff healthy and able to provide services. Unfortunately, this pandemic has created a lot of disruption in the way we operate as a society and as an economy and as a government. And I appreciate everyone working very hard to make it happen, but it is a real issue that we need to address, given our numbers. And I thank Commissioner Miller for his comments and data to help this board understand where we are, how we're going to go move forward to be able to function well. So thank you.
Commissioner Kemp to the motion.
Thank you. I feel we've traveled far from what the motion was. I know that Commissioner Smith asked it to be restated. As I understood it, what Commissioner Hagan was talking about, and I will be a no vote, is simply about the due process issues and having our staff look at the due process issues. I would, the safety issues, and thank you, Commissioner Miller, and thank you, everyone else on the safety issues, but that's something different. What he, I believe, stated was about due process. As an attorney, I think there's definite due process concerns, and those were stated also by Commissioner White. We, you know, our courts have been shut down. They're not having trials. They're not trying murders, you know? So this due process is a very real issue. I think we've heard already that our staff has looked into this well, and I would be a no vote on that. I feel like we have good, our good attorneys doing the research and already stating the case in terms of that. If you want to talk about the safety, that's another thing, and I can appreciate all that. But I think there's no question that there are due process concerns, that we have to make this available to people in person. And if we do that, then we start talking about the safety concerns. But as I understand the motion, and maybe we can restate it, it was simply about the due process, and then it got all confused with the safety. And I think the due process has already been handled and handled well by our staff, and I will be a no vote on, I think we already have that, you know, from our staff.
Commissioner White to the motion.
Commissioner Miller, I had just forgotten to take my hand down. I'll do that right now.
Okay. Commissioner Hagan, would you please restate your, I'm sorry, Mr. Gorman, your hands up?
Just, I apologize. This may not be to the motion per se. I just wanted to make clear and reiterate to the board that we do have hearings scheduled for August 3rd and 4th, L U Ho and Z H M on both days. And at this point, it is our intent to hold those hearings. So I apologize for being out of order. That's not exactly to the motion, but I just wanted to make sure that I was clear and didn't leave the board with a different impression of the current plan.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you want to restate the motion?
Yeah, and this will be quick. Again, the intent of the motion, it's not about Hillsborough County's percentage of positive cases, hospitalizations, or deaths as a result of COVID-19. It's also not about political agendas. Commissioner Kemp is right about one thing. It is, the motion is about due process. It's very simple. I just want to report on what other counties, how other counties are handling the legal and due process issues, and what solutions have they come up with. It's simple. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Merman. Please call the roll.
Miller?
No.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
White?
No.
Motion failed, 2 to 5, with Commissioners Miller, Kemp, Overman, Smith, and White voting no.
Okay, Mr. Gorman, is there anything else you need to bring before us?
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Moretta, is it?
Commissioner Miller?
Pardon me?
This is Commissioner Kemp. It's just that I was trying to speak to the motion that was on the floor rather than some of the discussion that preceded it, and I just wanted to make a point that I appreciated Commissioner White's point. moving these meetings in a place where they are accessible to where the discussion is in terms of the land use items. So I just think that's a very good idea, and I wanted to also express my support for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moretta, is there anything else concerning land use agenda?
No, sir, that concludes the agenda. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We're now standing adjourned for the land use meeting is now adjourned. I would like to call the order of the Board of County Commissioners Workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Ms. Zornita?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners.
Another roll call for the workshop, please.
Okay, I was going to get to that, but go ahead.
I apologize. Miller?
Yes, here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. Other forum?
Commissioner Zornita?
Good morning again, Commissioners. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Planning Commission. We're here today with a workshop on three items. The first two of those are items we're seeking your direction and input on. They include both Plan Amendments and Land Development Code Amendments ultimately, but they are not currently scheduled for a public hearing with you at this time. The third item is a Plan Amendment that is scheduled for a public hearing in August. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jay Collins, who's going to introduce the presentation.
Good morning, Jay Collins, Planning Commission staff. I'm joined by Planning Commission Project Manager for the Study, Marion Abrahamson, to introduce Jared Schneider with Kim Lee Horn. Kim Lee Horn is under contract to provide consulting services to complete the work requested by this board to provide a land use study of the residential plan to land use category. I would like to mention that all material about to be discussed is available to the public for viewing by utilizing the link provided in your agenda packet. Please visit planhillpro.org for more information about this study. And now, if it pleases the Chair, allow me to please introduce Mr. Schneider, who will provide the presentation for the workshop.
Mr. Snyder, you're recognized.
Good morning, everybody. Thanks for having us today, Commissioners. It's Jared Schneider with Kim Lee Horn. Jay did a good job. I'm going to talk really quickly about our study overview and the recommendations that we've been developing. As Jay mentioned, again, we're trying to understand the vision for the community, evaluating the residential plan to areas, the policies and regulations that are out there. We've also been reviewing the infrastructure needs in BOM specifically as well. So we really started, it seems like a year ago, we started March 11th with a community open house and in-person. We've had several online surveys and virtual meetings as well. Really like to thank all the stakeholders that have participated, and there's more to come as well, but we've had several virtual meetings as of late and really updating the policies through the summer and coming back to the community with some targeted meetings here in the fall in an open house yet to be scheduled. Really, what we're talking about, the residential plan to area, so what we have in this pink area is what we're calling the South Subplan area, and that's been our focus area. That's based on the moratorium area, but there's also the residential plan to North area in this yellow. I'd like to really kind of point towards the purple dash line. That's the BOM community plan boundaries. So as part of the land use analysis, really what we've been looking at is trying to understand what's out there today from a vacant developable standpoint, because that's really what, you know, these changes, these regulations could impact. So the vacant developable acres in our focus area and this red outline, there's 47% of the area is vacant developable today. Area in the north is much less so. There's not as much out there today. So now I want to transition really quickly, go over what we've heard from outreach. This is our first community work session that we had. We asked members of the community, tell us about the area today. What do you think about the area? And then also, on the right, your vision for the area. So, and this is a word cloud where we had instances of the same comment, the words are bigger. So we heard poor infrastructure congestion, so a lot of focus on infrastructure out in the area. On the right, we had managed traffic, keep it rural, less suburban-style development, improve roadways. Now I'm going to show you a little bit on the online survey that we got back. We have protection of wildlife habitat came up, as well as discouraging suburban development and infrastructure improvements were our top three. This slide, Commissioners, this focuses on what we've heard from our stakeholder interviews. We had one specifically for the development community. What we really heard is the community requirements are not working. There's little developable land, developable land, excuse me, left, and that's what I just presented on the map, and there was really a need for design guidelines. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. The community also had, we had a very focused stakeholder interview with the BOM Community Association, Pacific Association, and these points came directly from them, really supporting infrastructure was a really big desire. Density is a big one, really keeping at the two dwelling units per acre and half-acre lots, not in favor of clustering, and the 250-foot setbacks, I'll focus on that, was another request from them as well. So now I'm going to dive into the recommendations and what we've been doing. So I showed you this map on the right. Really what we've looked at for the residential plan to areas is splitting it into two different areas, if you will, the south area in this pink and the north area in this yellow. And the reason we thought we should do that is, in the pink, really aligning with the BOM community plan, that's again highlighted in this purple, it really helps us to kind of focus on the intent of that plan. And then there's also different levels of design guidance we could encourage. This table showing in red the changes of what's out there today in the comp plan. You've got two dwelling units per, up to two dwelling units per gross acre based on certain criteria. In red, we've kept that in the north area for an overall density of two dwelling units per gross acre or anything over 50 acres. And really what we did is we showed design rules here, and then in this area, we said added community benefits. We are, we are having active conversations about this right now. It's a work in progress. In the north area, we talked about a density bump up to three dwelling units per gross acre, meeting certain community benefit standards. On the south side, we really thought about, we've been going back and forth on this and had additional discussions, and we feel keeping it at the two dwelling units per gross acre is really kind of based on what the community is saying. So that's kind of our intent right now. So I talked a little bit about the community benefits or the commercial. This is something, again, we heard from the development community. This area, you know, back in the 90s, Plan Villages was created when there wasn't anything out there, and there was a need for commercial. There is commercial out there today on US 301 and other sections of the area. So what we're talking about is still requiring commercial but providing options. Instead of doing onsite commercial, you could do land dedication or other infrastructure improvements. Again, this is a work in progress, and we're exploring this further. I talked about community benefits. You know, another thing, again, we talked about potential bumps up to three dwelling units per gross acre in the north, holding the two dwelling units per gross acre in the south, meeting certain criteria. You would have to, you know, basically create a checklist and meet different housing types and sizes, the open space and preservation. This really gets into, again, more specific design standards, and we talked about this, particularly with BOM, is, you know, creating more rural-type housing. It really gets into kind of the suburban lots that the communities, again, specifically in BOM. Buffering has been a big discussion of having a 250-foot minimum buffer between developments. We're really trying to bring in flexibility that, you know, for smaller properties where you have, say, 10, 20, 30, 50 acres, a 250-foot buffer could be challenging. So what we're trying to do is provide screening requirements, because really it's about blocking the developments. So not only, not only is it the buffer, but the screening and more robust design standards there. Again, we talked about varying lot sizes and creating more of a rural look and feel in the area. So that's something that's been brought into the land development code, and we'll continue working on that with the community. So now I'm going to transition. This table primarily just shows the deliverables as part of the study. We've talked about many of these already, so we've got some of the immediate changes we're making to the comprehensive plan. A lot of it was just simplifying and consolidating it. Over time, it's been added on to and appended, so we cleaned that up, provided additional references to the land development code. I talked about the north and south areas. Updating commercial standards is the biggie, and then the design rules that I mentioned as well. And that all gets into more specifics in the land development code as well. So as part of the, as part of the study, again, we're updating the land development code that goes along with the comprehensive plan. So some other things we listed here, and I won't go into these in great detail. We didn't want, there's several other comments that we've heard from the community and stakeholders, landowners, while we did the stakeholder interviews, primarily talking about school siting and public concerns on water and sewer infrastructure. So that's something that we didn't want to forget about, so we've listed those as potential future, future items to tackle, but they're outside of this study. Same thing with this slide. So a lot of, again, there's a lot of comments on providing additional infrastructure in the area with some of these substandard roadways without, you know, larger, prone to not having shoulders and congestion. So where we're headed with this, again, we've updated the comprehensive plan. We've got drafts out in this packet as well as the land development code. We're looking at some additional targeted meetings with the community and the private stakeholders in the area to really get through talking to, or looking at that code further. And then we're talking about an open house in the fall, and with that, I think that's all we've got at this point, so we'll open it for questions. I know we went through that pretty quickly.
Thank you. Now, that was A1, am I correct?
Correct.
Are there any questions, Mr. Snyder?
Commissioner Miller, I have my hand up.
Your hand must not be working, Commissioner White. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for the briefing on this the other day. I just want to tell you that very recently, I've heard from the Community Association group out there in BOM, and I sense that we still have a little bit more work to do in engaging the community member stakeholders. So I'd like to ask that, you know, you even consider perhaps adding in an additional meeting with the folks out in the community to hear their concerns? And, you know, one thing I said during our briefing is to, you know, really just get at the root of what the community's looking for with those John Deere-colored, you know, keep BOM rural caps, to try to help them achieve everything that they can. I'm intrigued by the idea of allowing for the three-dwelling unit per acre density in the north area, but I would like to see a policy, though, that a TDR is mandated in that case, so that they must acquire TDRs from the south area. But I do sense, and I could be wrong, but I sense that the three-dwelling unit per acre density could help that northern area get to a traditional neighborhood development type pattern like you see in Fishhawk. And I've always said that I consider that north area to be just a logical outgrowth of the Fishhawk developments. For the county attorney's office, I don't need any sort of a firm answer today, but I would like for the county attorney's office to really see if there's a way to help the board get to a place to where we can exclude wetlands in the density calculations in the RP2 areas, because I sense that's the direction that a majority of the board members would like to go in. I do recognize that there can be some legal challenges there, but in a case where I think the majority of the board seeks to switch directions as a matter of policy related to that issue, I'd really, really like to see some work done there. I very much believe that it's something that the community would like to address as well. So those are my thoughts, but I would be a very happy commissioner if you can maybe just add in one more session with the Community Association folks.
Thank you for that input, Commissioner White. That is a conversation we've been having.
Okay, I don't see any other hands.
My hand's not working.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Staff, hand signal must not be working for me. I don't see any hands on here, so I don't know what's going on with my hand signals, but I think Commissioner Merman, you'll be next.
Yes, I did. Thank you, and I'll make this very brief. Thank you for your presentation, and I like the comments that Commissioner White made. I do, I have talked to several people that, in that community, they are kind of concerned about this north-south thing, so I think the additional meeting will be helpful to them, to really get them to understand it more, rather than thinking that their community's being split and bifurcated. So, and the only other thing I wanted to ask you about was whether either of those areas are appropriate for the additional affordable housing density similar to what we're doing in the WVR. So that's my only comments going forward, but good job so far, really good job. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And I'm fond of affordable housing. That's something we've talked about quite a bit, and felt like that wasn't something for the density increase at this point, encourage additional affordable housing out there.
Okay, thank you.
Staff, is there something you can do to help me with the hand signals that are not working on my end? Is anyone else want to speak? Mr. Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to, again, with the wetlands density bonuses that we give in Hillsborough County, I had put it on the new business on the agenda at the last BOCC meeting for staff to bring back a recommendation where I wanted to repeal any density bonuses we give for wetlands. I, and I don't think that there's any, to Commissioner White's point, thank you, I don't think there's any legal issues about doing that. It's a density bonus that we choose to give, and it makes it very ineffective for us to do any kinds of TDR, trading of development rights, because we've given away the shop already. So we really need to, I think, take that back, and I liked it in the written, not in here, I printed off from the Plan Hillsborough, where the recommendation too is to modify the combined density policy to net developable acreage, and it's talking about repealing the wetlands density bonus, and what it says, it's recommended that this practice should be modified to base developable density within parcels of, on the net developable land as opposed to the gross acreage. In other words, we shouldn't be giving, protecting wetlands and other environmentally sensitive conditions should stand on their own. On, these unbuildable conditions should not be included in the calculation of allowed density combinations within single parcels, nor is the environmentally sensitive land credit suggested to be changed. So I appreciate that. I think that that is the way to move forward, and I think that's very important.
Commissioner, throw hand to Lundgren.
Excuse me?
Commissioner, may I respond to that? I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty with the hand.
Mr. Lundgren?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was having difficulty with my hand.
Yeah, well, you're recognized.
I just wanted to respond to the question about the legal considerations associated with the density credits, and that will be something that we're evaluating going forward, and I do recognize that Commissioner Kemp has the future item that is also requesting a similar analysis.
Okay, is anyone else?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was having difficulty with, with my hand.
Yeah, well, I, I, you recognize?
I just wanted to respond to the question about the legal considerations associated with the density credits. And that will be something that we're evaluating going forward. And I do recognize that Commissioner Kemp has the future item that is also requesting a similar analysis.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Commissioner Overman, I just have a quick question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hold on. Who is, who is that?
Commissioner Overman has a quick question, please.
Commissioner, when you recognize?
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Snyder, thank you very much for your presentation. I, I'm getting a little bit of a conflict in understanding, I think, from the community. What I've heard from them is they want to stay looking rural. And I've never felt like two houses per acre was rural, but that's, you know, my perspective. But they don't, they've indicated that no more than two dwellings is part of your presentation and the half acre lots not in favor of clustering and TDRs. Because if, if, for example, a property owner wants to have one house in an acre, wouldn't a TDR allow him to sell the density to an area where clustering is needed or density is needed to facilitate having larger lots? And not the density that's already zoned for that? Is that?
Yeah. So we've had, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about the TDR discussion. We, we've talked to the community, especially the Baum folks in the south portion there. Originally, when we talked about TDRs, they weren't too in favor of that. But when we talked about making it ascending area and as was, was mentioned, potentially to the north area, they were more in favor of that. You're correct. The half acre lots, I, I wouldn't necessarily call that rural as, as well. I, I think we're trying, trying to balance the, you know, the efficiency of, of the development pattern. So clustering hasn't been something in the south area that's been particularly favored, but we're looking at rural design standards and guidance where you could have different sized lots. A lot of times it seems like it gets, straight to the matter, it seems like it gets to the 40 foot lots that are more of a suburban pattern. Breaking that up a little bit.
Okay. And then one other point, they do indicate about specific design standards in that section that they are looking for different housing types and they are looking for multimodal access or mobility as a concern. So have they discussed the value of having what is traditionally square lots in rural areas? Maintain that patterning for building a grid when the density comes so that connectivity is easily attained in those commercial benefit areas. Has that been really talked about in the groups?
We haven't got specific into, you know, setting up a grid, but we have talked about specifically creating a mobility plan for the area that talks about where there's local connections, not, not just the, the arterials or collectors that are out there, but definitely creating a plan that builds on the Baum community plan and shows those local connections and connectivity.
Okay. Well, houses in a bag really don't make sense to the community. So I'm sure they probably feel mutual because they don't have to have that. And I'd like to see if there's a way to make sure that's incorporated in their plan. Thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it. And I'll stop there.
Commissioner Overman.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Commissioner?
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. Big picture, the RP2 and the, as well as the WVR2, I can, I can speak to get a lot out of the way here for both of them. They were ill conceived in my, in my view, but they were conceived. The point of them was to, to have land in the rural area that is one per five acre maximum. And say, you could do two per acre if you meet a lot of other requirements with the point being that you would, you would create a small country, a little town, village where you would capture the trips internally. So you would not be putting, overburdening the infrastructure with some commuter subdivision like we've been seeing. So in my mind, the point of these moratoriums was not to figure out how we can give more density and, and more commuters on the roads. But to figure, or, you know, but, but to figure out how we could make those things better because they weren't really working. They were, they were resulting in some development patterns that people weren't happy with and that was overburdening our infrastructure and not capturing trips internally as they, as they occurred. So as I look at the slide that we were shown about how we're, we're now talking about, and in WVR2, we're seeing the same thing. We're now talking about increasing density more. I'm thinking that this was not the point. You have rural land out here that is one per five. When we give somebody two per acre, we're multiplying their entitlements by 10. We're giving them 10 per five instead of one per five. And so they need to really, you know, step up and meet what the community desires and what is good for the whole county in terms of not creating commuter subdivisions that are overburdening our infrastructure, not overcrowding our schools, making sure that water and sewer is provided at their expense. They need to be doing all of that and we need to be tightening that up and making sure that the development occurs with, in, in some way that could serve the purpose of these RP2, WVR2 things by providing development that blends in with the communities in time. Not simply saying, well, you know, what if we did a little more horse trading, you know, could you choke down some more density? And I think we've got the, the, the cart before the horse. In a lot of ways, you can see that the community is concerned about the local community as well as the county. And South County in particular is, is concerned about infrastructure, concerned about traffic. Making sure that it, as we change from one per five to two per acre and God forbid more, we make sure that we have infrastructure. And I'm not sure that we're seeing that. Well, I don't think we're seeing that at all. Now possibly the TDR could help in, in that it would keep the number the same and not increase. But, but keep in mind that going from one per five to two per acre is not a given. That's not their entitlement. And now we're going to bargain for some more. They have to come to a zoning hearing to get that two per acre. And they have to prove they're, they're making it worthwhile to get that, to have their entitlements raised 10 times. So what's in it for the development community to go through this moratorium and work with the community and work with us and figure out some way to make RP2 and WVR2 better than it was? Is not that, you know, okay, figure out how they get more density. It's to figure out how they can come ask for 10 times their entitlement and not have a pitched battle here at the, at the, at the board and have agreement with us and with the community that what they're, when they ask for that two per acre, they are improving. They're providing something that improves the community. And I think, I think TDR is something that could do that. I also think making sure we eliminate wetland density credits would, would be helpful. And I'll point out that the Ruskin Community Plan eliminated west, wetland density credits many, many years ago. And before us Keystone Plan did. So it's perfectly legal, perfectly possible to eliminate wetland density credits in this, in these areas. But I'll end with this in terms of the, the cart before the horse is increasing density in these rural areas. We just had a market study done conjunction with this in June last month. It said, we don't have the market to support more density. It says, quote, "Market findings confirm that planning approvals have exceeded demonstrated market demand in this part of South County." So I think I froze there. Did you hear me? So, so.
Bring it up for lending, Commissioner Smith.
Yes, the market study says we do not have demand. This is not time. We do not need to be increasing density. What we need to be doing is making sure that the development that occurs here occurs in a way that is compatible with the community and that will not overburden the infrastructure of South County. Occurs in, in a way that more cars are, there's more, there is capacity for those cars on the roads. Not just in, in Baum and Wy Mama, but through Sun City Center, through Gibsonton, through Riverview on their way to work every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move to A2, I understand that the hand signal is working. So Commissioner Overman, would you check your hand signal? Let me see if I can see it. Okay, it is working. Okay. Very good. You can take it down now.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Smith?
Yes. The, the next item is A2 and that's going to be an update on the Wy Mama. Similar study looking at comprehensive plan amendments and land development code amendments. So Jay Collins will introduce this item.
Thank you, Ms. Lundgren. Again, thank you, sir. And again, good morning, Jay Collins with the Planning Commission staff. I am joined by the Planning Commission project manager for this study, Tatiana Gonzalez, to introduce Taryn Sabia with the University of South Florida. The Florida Center for Community Design and Research. USF is under contract to provide consulting services, complete work at the request of this board, including an update to the Wy Mama Community Plan and to provide a land use study of the Wy Mama Village Residence to Land Use category. Again, all materials about to be discussed are available to the public reviewing by utilizing the link provided in the agenda packet. Please visit planhillsborough.org for more information about this study. And now if it pleases the chair, allow me to introduce Ms. Sabia who will provide the presentation.
Sir, Ms. Sabia, you recognize?
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us this morning. We're going to give the update for the Wy Mama Community Plan update. As Jay Collins mentioned, I am Taryn Sabia, the Director for the Florida Center for Communities by Design at the University of South Florida. We are looking at the Wy Mama area and the Wy Mama Community Plan update. So there was an original plan done in 2006. We are updating that plan. We are also taking items that exist in the original plan and providing some of those elements at this time. One of those things being an overlay in the land development code for the downtown area and some of the others items that we'll go through. So the shaded area is the WVR2 that sits within the entire Wy Mama Community Village. And so we are looking at the WVR2 and downtown, but we are looking at it in the context of that entire community boundary. Some of the key objectives, these objectives both came from the original plan as well as updated items that we heard from the community during our outreach. So the ideas of walkability, public transit, bike networks and trails and walking school buses were something that the community talked about a lot. They're looking for better ways to be connected. They're looking for ways to be connected outside of the automobile as well. And to be able to have safe routes for children to walk in bike to school. They're looking for a distinct vision and character, particularly for the downtown. But they really want to emphasize the idea of town in nature for the community across the board. Some of the other important items were to revitalize Wy Mama's downtown by leveraging infrastructure improvements. We do see a lack of infrastructure in the downtown currently. And we do believe that this is a reason that we haven't seen more commercial development take shape in the past 15 years. Create opportunities for strengthening the community's access to jobs, education and the region. And so this was also important, looking at how they can access these things within their own community and also have access to things outside of their community when needed. And to continue, they'd like to maintain the affordability within the Wy Mama area even as development takes shape. And ensure the final Wy Mama Village Community Plan communicates a framework for sustainable and coordinated community development. They would like to leverage new development to support existing amenities. This is an important aspect of how the area within the WVR2 can support the overall community plan and make it successful. Encourage workforce and affordable housing development in Wy Mama. There's a great need for new housing in the area and this was a big focus of the community. And adopt policies that will help achieve the community plan. So we are looking at a series of policies with this, including the livable communities element, the future land use element and the land development code, which will take into consideration the downtown overlay as well as Wy Mama Village 2. The plan focuses on health equity, resilience and sustainability. These are the guiding principles. And in talking with the community, in researching the community and understanding its context, we know that these are elements that are really important to focus on as an overall umbrella for the project. The vision, which I will only read a portion of in an effort to save time, but we do think it's really important that in order to secure the participation of the community's diverse population in its economic growth, contribute to its readiness for the future and connect to its assets and natural resources. The Wy Mama Community Plan focuses on health equity, resilience and sustainability. The community-wide approach celebrates Wy Mama's agricultural heritage, rural natural resources, local businesses, cultural legacy and small town character. These are really important facets of the community. The community wants to maintain some of those agricultural roots. They would like to see that be part of the heritage that moves forward. And one of the things that we learned from talking to the community is when they talk about their history, they're talking about what they feel they've lost. So at one time they felt that Wy Mama was a complete community. It was that complete village that had everything they needed to be self-sustaining and to be able to shop within their community, go to the barber, go to school, have, start a business. And these things have slipped away with the closing of the rail line, with the closing of the high school. There was a number of things that were lost to the community and these are items that they're looking to get back. And so this idea of a small town with a lot is what Wy Mama is looking to have. So that, that downtown area is where we see a lot and it has that small town charm. But we also know that we need to have a certain amount of development to be able to support that downtown and to support a main street character. So we're looking at a community-wide approach through mobility, forming character, environment and open space and cultural capital and community. These are the aspects that we have heard come through both the previous plan and the current residents that are there in terms of things that are vital within the community. So these are the components that you will see in the larger plan document. And we do think it's important to focus on the social networks and shared resources as much as we focus on things like mobility and bike networks, right? These are all related. And for this small community, these are important pieces. We have an urban to rural transect for Wy Mama. We thought that this was important to be able to show how density is happening within the overall community all the way from the downtown and stepping down in density as you go through the existing neighborhoods that are in the urban service area and then stepping into the residential neighborhoods that are within the WVR2 and then into the rural landscape beyond the WVR2. For forming character, we're looking at really helping to envision a downtown that is vibrant, that has that small town, main street feel to it, that does have porch-like storefronts and qualities that remind you of that rural farm town. In this image, you can see the Wy Mama Welcome Center. Residents had an idea that they would like Wy Mama to be the welcome center to the regional park system and that this could be a draw for other people to want to visit Wy Mama and to be able to tie together the town in nature elements that they're looking for. As we look at the overall plan, these districts were established not to be As we look at the overall plan, these districts were established not to be regulatory, but rather for us to be able to understand what some of the opportunities and potentials were in Wy Mamma within the WVR2 and the downtown, to understand the relationships and to be able to understand where development potential was versus environmentally sensitive lands. And so you will also see that we have laid out a potential street network. We feel it's really important that there be that connectivity to help prevent people, you know, from clogging roadways. We know we've heard a lot about that, and we want to find ways for there to be connectivity, both for automobiles, but also connectivity for bike networks. And you'll see that strong diagonal line, which is on the screen right here. This diagonal line was the original rail line, is now the Tico easement. We do think that this makes an exceptional bike trail connecting through the entire community, connecting what would be future development to the downtown, providing safe passage for children to be able to bike to existing schools as well as new schools for the future, which we know the Hillsborough County School District is looking to. And we also know that with those schools will come the need for housing for teachers and staff that would be at those places. As we look at the Main Street core in downtown, you'll notice the highlighted area that is on the screen. And the highlighted area is really to be able to show what we're calling the receiving zone. The receiving zone is the area that we have designated to receive transfer of development rights. So this area is the priority area in to take credits that would be within the WVR2 and transfer within the downtown, which is also in the urban service boundary, and to be able to add that density there. We do also have an affordable housing bonus density that we are looking at, and we would like the affordable housing and TDR to be able to stack in this area. The dash T shape that you see is what we're looking at as the Main Street core. These would be the blocks that would host the Main Street businesses, and that would fall under some of those design guidelines that are within the downtown overlay. So again, we want to be able to support that Main Street with the appropriate densities. Some of the concerns that we have seen is that both within the downtown and overall Wy Mamma, there are a number of housing that is in mobile homes, so 39% for community-wide, and 35% of housing in downtown are mobile homes. And so the need for sustainable, affordable housing in this area is critical. We know it is something needed countywide, as we have 39% of the county that is housing cost burdened. And so taking all those things into consideration, this is part of the focus on wanting to make sure that we're providing an area where we can encourage both affordable housing and the transfer of development rights to help preserve open space. As we look at the downtown, one of the things that the community really stressed is a welcome, a gateway, something that says you have been, you know, you are here, you have arrived at Wy Mamma. This is something that they had many years ago, and they would like to have that again. And so this is one of the, you know, infrastructure pieces that we're looking at, as well as street lighting, and then also taking into consideration the infrastructure issues of downtown. There is a lack of sewer in the downtown. This is something that will need to be looked at because for a number of businesses, as well as multifamily development, sewer will be required to be able to meet code. And so these are important things that are going to come up as we look at the downtown. This is the master plan as we envision it. And again, this isn't going to happen overnight, but rather something that we can aspire to over the next five, 10, 15, and even 20 years in some cases. So the white buildings in this are currently areas that could be developed. Many of those are currently empty parcels or parcels that are significantly underdeveloped. And so we're looking to be able to help provide that vision for the community. And the strategic plan is going to be looking at the items here. So development opportunities, as well as the affordable housing opportunities. And we want to be able to bring these things together into a timeline for the community so that there are things that the community and its advocates can begin to work on together. And that's one of those reasons that we talked about, that cultural capital and community. Because in order to be able to achieve some of the things that are in this plan, the community will have to work together to get there. When we look at mobility and circulation overall, we are looking again at that connectivity piece and how we look at creating bike networks that connect to overall trail systems, as well as that connected street network. And this is going to be a key piece that both connects the new development, not only to other new developments, but connects it to downtown specifically and the urban service boundary. We really want to draw these two areas together. There is a symbiotic relationship, and so circulation really focuses on that. The idea of complete streets in this area, again, is really important so that we're looking at the different mobility options, particularly for the community members that are transportation disadvantaged. We want to make sure that we are addressing safe pedestrian ways, as well as the bike network and the potential for the future transit route, which would circulate within the downtown, but would also connect to Ruskin. We know that this is something that has been looked at, that Hart has been considering. We do think it would be a mechanism to really help connect the citizens that are in Wy Mamma to much-needed assets or amenities or services that are within the Ruskin area. And open space and parks, this was something really that was important to the community, that open space. So when we look at the sensitive lands and where development potential was, we wanted to take into consideration how much open space, you know, we could preserve. And so requiring new developments to maintain 40% open space is something that we felt was important and that we would like to see 10% of that to be within the development itself, to encourage interior parks and trail connections. Agri-hoods and agriculture, some of the ideas that we are sharing is to be able to provide alternatives to just the two units per gross acre through the transfer of development rights and also through the agrihood model, so that we can also preserve that heritage of agriculture. Where current agriculture could be maintained, it can transfer its rights of development into the urban service boundary. It could develop a smaller portion of its area and maintain its farms. We could see the development of co-op farming, which we think is going to be something that could really help broaden the industry in Wy Mamma and provide opportunities to current farm workers who are looking to be able to manage or own their own farms. And then again, the culture, capital, and community, and supporting sustainable local businesses. Hillsborough County already has programs in place with the Entrepreneurship Collaborative Center. Having a satellite of that center in Wy Mamma's downtown would be something that could really help strengthen and create sustainable local business in the area. And we do think that that local business growth is going to be what helps to create jobs within this small town. And again, it's going to take a number of partnerships. These are organizations that are already working in the community and doing great things. And so by able, by enabling them to collaborate around certain issues and topics and initiatives, we think it will really help progress the community plan. The policy updates that we're looking at, again, the future land use element. So these are the things that are under consideration, the residential growth density, the employment service requirements that are currently within the future land use element, possible decrease in the square footage. And this is based on the market study, as you have seen. And then the transfer of development rights and finding ways that we can encourage that through the receiving zone. And then the land development code, the WVR2, looking at including the Wy Mamma Village Residential Neighborhood in Part Five of the Land Development Code and creating the Wy Mamma Downtown Overlay. So we're looking at a one- to five-year actionable strategies as part of that strategic plan, creating a farming co-op incubator that can help and assist in the creation of the co-ops. There's a number of models. They can also be done on land before it becomes developed. A community land trust for affordable housing. Infrastructure prioritization plan for the downtown, being able to prioritize the infrastructure that is needed. Educational partnerships and shared use agreements with the School District of Hillsborough County and also HCC. Expanding healthcare access and small business development in partnership with Hillsborough County. So these are things that we think are accomplishable and can be set to a shorter timeframe. And with that, I would be happy to take any questions. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you very much, and I'm excited to see what's developing there. It's very clear that the community is engaged in this, and it's excellent to see. I'm always wearing my affordable housing hat. So I know, we all know that this county needs more affordable housing units, but those in need are even more critical, like the areas of Wy Mamma. According to the Census Bureau, Wy Mamma has a per capita income of $14,912, less than half the value for the county. And while 28.5% of persons live in poverty, that number nearly doubles in that area. So being able to make sure that this growth and this attractiveness that's created doesn't displace the people who have a livelihood and a long culture of living there is a critically important point in developing the strategies that are coming here. I've reviewed the draft plan, overlay plan, and have some reservations on Section 3.2, 3.12, the Affordable and Workforce Housing Density Bonus. This section includes a very concerning expansion of the definition of affordable housing to include workforce housing. I'm concerned about this language, especially in light of a privately-initiative Comprehensive Plan Amendment that was presented on June 9th in the Plan Amendment Workshop, which would allow for a density bonus to apply to RP2 and WVR2 land use categories if affordable and/or attainable housing. There's a lot of good community work going on in these plans, and I especially love the dialogue and the thoughtful dialogue that occurred regarding affordability and diversity. This area needs the multi-income development that is envisioned with the density bonuses to prevent displacement of the citizens of this community. The numbers show that this community, like our county, needs affordable housing, and I cannot support the initiatives that broaden or redefine the utilization of these bonuses as it opposed, as it's described, as attainable housing. It needs to be under our affordable housing guidelines. And as we've seen, given the per capita income in that area, it ranges at 30% to 50% AMI, using a focus of above 100 or on 20, which is the workforce housing, as being priority, will certainly displace the people that live in that area. And I'm, you know, really concerned that we make sure that as we grow this area, we grow it for the people that live there and those that went on to share in that diversity of income and culture. So I'll stop there.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize for a question.
And those were great comments, Commissioner Overman, and I couldn't agree more with everything you were saying. I see, and I see a lot of work, good work, being done by our consultants and our staff and the community in trying times. I see a lot of great things being put together here, a walkable town center and stuff, but many of these things, many of these things are already in the Wy Mamma Community Plan. I want to make sure that as we do continue with community outreach, that the community is not being talked into thinking that they need to accept things that they don't want in order to trade for things that they already have in their community plan or for things that we can give them without any onerous bargaining. You know, we can build them a gateway as an address point. We are going to do the conversion from low-pressure sewer system and provide a county septic service there. We're going to do that. They don't have to compromise on a big package to get that. We are, we will help support local businesses and farms. So I just want to make sure the community understands and that the staff is careful not to let them be led into believing that they need to make compromises they don't need to make to get some of these great things that are in their plan. And, you know, I do hear community support for affordable housing. I know that it is important, but it is important with everything that, in light of everything Commissioner Overman was saying, we do the math. I want to see the numbers when we're talking about affordable housing because the two housing developments we, this county just approved of 2,100 houses on 40-foot wide lots, I want to make sure that those houses are not falling into this definition of affordable workforce attainable housing. And so we're like promising something that they're already getting, that these developers are building and happy to build every day and laughing all the way to the bank while we trade dense, we hand them density bonuses to do what they're already doing. Okay, so I want to see the math that proves that the houses, affordable houses, we are considering giving density bonuses for, and I would only consider it inside the urban service area, in the downtown area, in the walkable town center, but still make sure that we are getting something we're not already getting, that the affordable housing will be affordable, as Commissioner Overman said, by the people making the incomes that people in Wy Mamma are making. And make sure that the jobs are there to support it, as was originally intended in the Wy Mamma Community Plan. We all know, you put affordable housing away from this far out from the urban job centers, and we're creating problems. We're creating, we're adding traffic, commuter traffic, and we're putting affordable housing where people have to also have the burden of car ownership for every single person in the house that needs to drive long distances to their jobs. So I love the idea of local transit with affordable housing, but we need to tie it together and make sure that we don't have all these promises of transit and jobs and entrepreneurship in the town center, but first we're going to do the housing. And then the community is left holding the bags without the rest of the promise. So those are my, those are my thoughts today on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you recognize for a question.
Thank you. The, I want to, again, very much, I thought it was very well-taken points by Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Smith as regards this. I agree with you both as to the affordable housing, just like the wetlands density. This density is not needed. We're just giving away the shop. We need to have something better than that. And as a market study, as you pointed out prior, Commissioner Smith, to reconcile the unintended balances between market demand and planning entitlements for South County development projects, the market findings confirm that the planning approvals have exceeded demonstrated market demand in this part of South County. So why in the world would we be doing this poorly-defined attainable housing? I mean, that is not something that is well-considered. I was glad to hear a little bit about the sewer and, or the low-pressure sewer system, and actually, I guess, a lack of even that in parts of the community. and actually, I guess, a lack of even that in parts of the community. Obviously, that's not something that the developers are going to give, where it hasn't been, but something that will rely on county resources. So again, this isn't a gift that's coming from agreeing to bad development or continued bad development in the area that won't benefit and won't make the most of this vision. And I think that that's important to point out, things, little things like the gateway and things like that. Those are public investments that there needs to be a commitment on the part of this commission to invest in those areas, I believe, unless you're going to tell me a different plan for how that will occur. And in order for us to make this vision come true, we finally have to deal with the low pressure sewer system and, and actually the public investment that will be required, not necessarily the development investment. So again, I'm against the affordable housing and the, it's very important, the low pressure sewer system. But the third thing I want to address is this promise that's been made and alluded to about HART. I have sat outside the urban service area, we, it is inherently unaffordable, and as you said, Commissioner Smith, you know, when people have to own cars and they are not, it's not trip capture within a community because the jobs aren't there. I saw the plan, and I think it's very disingenuous of anyone to represent to this community if that has been represented, that somehow that is a affordable plan in any way for transit in that community. What I saw was three circulators, $10 million capital investment, and I'm just going off the top of my mind from reading it once a couple months ago, and 10 million operating a year. 10 million operating a year would be something akin to one quarter of HART's entire budget right now for three circulators in Ruskin. I mean, and to mislead, I think, those in Ruskin that, you know, this is something that could be possible, and that wasn't even a connection to bigger communities like Brandon or Tampa, I think is, is really, really does not suit well. We should be really talking about real things and not fantasies that we are never going to do and do the public investment because it's just not possible. So I'm really concerned that we're not overpromising or we're not saying developers are going to provide this and that we actually make a commitment to invest in this community and help to create a true vision. So, because it's a lovely vision and I want to see it happen. And I'll end with that.
Ms. Anita?
Yes, sir. The, if we're ready to move on to the next item, that is CPA 20-14, the context-based classification, and Katrina Corcoran will give the presentation.
Ms. Corcoran, you recognize?
Good morning, commissioners. I am bringing up my presentation right now. Can you confirm that you can hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Thank you. My name is Katrina Corcoran, planning commission staff. I'm here today to present the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment on Context Classification. This is a publicly initiated text amendment via the county. It adds a context-based classification plan to the transportation element, which is a place-sensitive approach to roadway design. As you can see from the graphic at the right, this takes into account the land use surrounding a roadway from a rural context steadily into a more suburban context and finally into an urban context. It preserves right-of-way and furthers Vision Zero safety goals. There are also-
Ricky?
Excuse me, someone need to mute themselves. Continue, Ms. Corcoran.
Thank you. This also parallels updates to the Transportation Technical Manual's roadway cross-sections as well as access management regulations. You can see here there are minor tech changes to the following policies listed on this slide, and these are primarily the addition of a context-based classification plan to the language as well as preservation to help clarify the language within these policies. There are also some new policies within the proposed amendment, including Policy 154, which includes context classification definitions within a table, and Policy 155, which indicates that the county will coordinate on roadway improvements with other jurisdictions and defer to their corridor preservation plans if they exist. There is also a new definition for context-based classification in the removal of an outdated plan implementation and monitoring section. As you can see here, there is a, also the addition of a context-based classification map. This would be adopted as a part of this amendment. However, the map that you have on your screen is the current draft version of this map. As you can see from the legend to the right, C1 and C2 is the green color, that is the most rural context classification. The orange color is C3C, that is suburban commercial. The yellow color is C3R, that is suburban residential. The brown red color is C3T, that is suburban town. The purple color is urban general, that's C4. The pink color, C5, is the next urban classification above that. The bordered pink color is special district, and the red color is the most urban classification. Now, we did receive some comments from agencies on this amendment. The city of Tampa indicated that they would like to see the inclusion of C5, C6, and special district classifications. They also provided some comments on roadways within their jurisdiction that they felt should be changed based on their plans and policies. Temple Terrace and Plant City also had some comments for roadways within their jurisdiction that they felt should be changed from one context classification to another. As you can tell from the previous slide, the county did amend the map to include these comments. Hillsborough Area Regional Transit also indicated that they had a comment on transit stop spacing as it relates to context classification. However, this is in regards to future work and not directly related to this amendment. Tampa Bay Water, Hillsborough County Public Schools, and the Environmental Protection Commission also responded, but indicated that they had no comments. This concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I'd also like to indicate that John Patrick and Matt Lewis, county staff, who have been working with me on this amendment, are also on this call to help answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Corcoran. I'm looking to see if we have any questions. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Thank you. I, when I heard you speak about HART, that was a concern. I realized that this is mostly a issue in the city at this time, but the poor planning of HART stops has been just a real problem, and it's an inter-jurisdictional problem, some of those roads being FDOTs roads, some of them being city of Tampa. This probably, as we densify out in the county and have more service in those areas, will probably be something to forward think about. So I understand your comments, but I just wanted to emphasize that that's really important because what we have now is just horrible narrow places for stops where, and I always give an example of a Walmart that's near me in Seminole Heights where it has this, it's one of the most used stops in the county for HART, has a narrow little bus stop there on the road, has an enormous empty parking lot at the Walmart that I'm sure that they might have allowed for the bus stop to come there, being that it's well-used and probably some of it doing the shopping there. So I just think it's really important to be very cognizant, and I don't, it seems like a very inter-jurisdictional problem. FDOT owns the road that that's on, city of Tampa is part of the, the decision-making in terms of the land use there, and I'm just concerned how that moves forward in the future when we go for the best transit system that we can possibly do.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Ms. Anita?
That concludes our agenda for today's workshop.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, the comprehensive plan workshop is adjourned. We will now move to the special meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have a real call.
Miller?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman? Commissioner Merman?
Here.
Here.
The Merman's here. Overman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. You have a forum?
Okay. The purpose of the special meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to approve an order that's drafted providing for a delegation of emergency management authority to the Emergency Policy Group for hurricanes and tropical storm threats, providing the board with emergency management activity for all other disasters, pandemics, emergency occurrences, or threats thereof, and specifying that existing executive orders of the Emergency Policy Group in effect as of this date of this amendment shall remain in effect. Said amendments to be qualified in the Hillsborough County Code of Ordinance as the board is also being asked to authorize advertising a schedule of a public hearing for August 5th, 2020. Before moving to public comment, Ms. Beck, is there anything you need to add?
No, sir. Paul Johnston is available when you're ready to describe the ordinance.
Okay. We're now moving to public comment. We have two people that were assigned to the public comment. The first one is Mike Beltrane.
Hi, good morning. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Hi, hi, good morning, Commissioner. Thank you, thank you for hearing from me. As, as you mentioned, or as I, I'll tell you, I represent Southeast Hillsborough County in the Florida House of Representatives. I want to express my support for revesting the emergency powers in the county commission according to this proposal. I'll start out and say I've been very concerned about some of these county-level bodies such as the EPG that do not provide proportional representation to the people in Hillsborough County. As you all know, the mayors of Tampa, Temple Terrace, and Plant City each have one of the eight seats on the EPG, and yet unincorporated Hillsborough County receives no representation at all for any municipal official because they don't have any municipality. The population of unincorporated Southeast Hillsborough County is comparable to the population of Tampa, and like Tampa, vastly exceeds the populations of Temple Terrace and Plant City combined. But all of our residents in unincorporated Hillsborough County, which is two-thirds of the entire county, do not live in an incorporated municipality, and we're therefore underrepresented on the EPG. And this isn't an attack on the mayors or any other members of the EPG, I'm just stating the fact that we don't have any direct representation for our unincorporated areas. We just have our countywide officials who we elect along with everyone else, but yet we're still underrepresented. We happen to have the school board chair from our area, and she serves on the EPG, but that's just, that's just happenstance, and that's a temporary condition. And the second point I want to make is that the EPG exercises legislative power, and yet you have mayors and the sheriff, some of whom serve in executive capacities, making laws that they might enforce in their executive capacity. That leads to separation of powers concerns. It's my belief that we should vest the legislative power for the county in a body duly constituted and subject to the traditional democratic principles of separation of powers and proportional representation, and that's the Board of County Commissions. And if we need to take swift action in an emergency, it should be exercised by a duly-elected or appointed executive who represents the entire jurisdiction. There's very few counties in Florida that have this system, so we're not in good company and nor are we following traditional constitutional principles. And if we need to have an intergovernmental working group, it should function as such that can provide feedback, recommendations, cooperation, but they should not be an ad hoc legislature where you, your edict carries the force of law. There is one point I want to make about the text of the proposal, and it's in section 3E, and it says that all executive orders and emergency rules and rules imposed and enacted pursuant to this article shall be reduced to writing as soon as possible. And that implies that the commission might make a rule that later on it would write up. That would respectfully suggest that you're better off drafting a rule that everyone can review, amend if necessary, and then debate, and then pass, as opposed to passing some general proposition and then later reducing that to writing. There've been problems with the EPG.
Beltrane, your three minutes are up, sir. Sorry, your three minutes are up. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Jason Kimball, you have three minutes?
Thank you. Hey, guys, so on the agenda, I see a proposal that the Emergency Policy Group's executive order mandating face coverings be worn in indoor locations of businesses remain in effect. That cannot be passed. If we just look at the EPG, they required no randomized clinical trial to implement a mandatory face covering order. That is outrageous. That is insane. If a private citizen attempted to only market and recommend what the EPG is requiring, they would be in jail by now. No randomized controlled trials, no valid evidence to support face covering, and the EPG is requiring them. I don't know how that's possible. We know the evidence that EPG considered was not scientifically valid, and it turns out to be worse than that because the only randomized controlled trial that I know of on cloth masks and respiratory viruses literally says cloth masks resulted in significantly higher rates of infection. I emailed the full study to all the commissioners this morning. This is really the worst-case scenario. This is why the FDA has such stringent rules when it comes to medical devices. This is why the EPG would be in jail right now if it were a private citizen. So the mask pushers really need to take the time to do the randomized controlled studies and then present their evidence before the B OCC. At this point, the face covering requirement and enforcement 100% has to be removed in order for the B OCC to retain the EPG's executive orders. The county cannot take on the liability. You cannot open up the county to any further lawsuit. We have to end this madness. I don't know why the B OCC would want to retain such a controversial order in the first place. If the EPG was handling things correctly, this meeting wouldn't be happening. The B OCC can consider mandatory face covering when the mask pushers finally have valid evidence to present. And I know there has been pressure from doctors. I understand that's what informed the EPG's decisions, but until they have a randomized controlled trial, there's nothing they can say. Any time they spent addressing the EPG is time they should have spent doing those studies and proving their point, but they haven't and they won't because they know what the results will be based on the studies already conducted. You know, the study that I emailed to you guys this morning, that was done in 2015. So I just recently found out about it, you know, we're still learning about everything here. So let's please remove the politics from this and stick with the science. There is no possible way the B OCC can mandate general face covering, given the conclusion of the randomized controlled study that indicates cloth masks increase risk of infection. It literally said at the end of the conclusion, guidelines need to be updated. So I think we should really take our time with this. The EPG is facing a lawsuit, so essentially what that lawsuit will do is put the order under judicial review. I think that it would definitely be wise to wait until that happens.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Your time is up. Thank you, thank you. That was the last person that signed up for public comment. Mr. Johnston, do you need to explain the draft ordinance?
Good morning, commissioners. This is Paul Johnston, County Attorney's Office. Just briefly, at the July 15th board meeting, this board directed staff to draft amendments to the emergency management ordinance. Due to the short turnaround time, it was truly a team effort by several members of the County Attorney's Office. We have prepared the attached draft for your consideration, and we're requesting you to direct staff to schedule a public hearing on the amendments and to advertise the public hearing in the paper.
Okay, thank you. Before I pass the gavel and give this the championship over to Ms. Oh, Commissioner Overman, I'd like to ask Chief Jones and Ms. Wise a question. Chief Jones, are you, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I am.
Good morning. Would you like to give some input as to your feelings on the draft ordinance we have right now?
Yes, sir. We would recommend that it be an all-hazards approach and that EPG would not be separated, separating out the hurricanes and tropical storms. And if you'd like, I can give a brief background on the reason for my recommendation.
We can, we can barely hear you.
You gotta hear me, so I'm closer.
My mask off. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. We're six feet apart, so I'll take my mask off. So I can give you some background on that if you'd like, but I would recommend that we keep the EPG consistent for all hazards and not separate out hurricanes and tropical storms.
Okay, so you're saying that everything should come back to the Board of County Commissioners?
Yes, sir. And again, I can give you some background for that if you wish, but that is my recommendation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ms. Wise, you there?
Yes, sir. I'm here as well.
Do you have any opinions or comments concerning the draft ordinance as we have it right now?
Chairman Miller, I had some conversation with Chief Jones, and he can't explain more fully. He has explained to me that an EPG is structured as it should be for all hazards. Of course, historically, we have concentrated on hurricanes. Most recently, of course, we've concentrated on a pandemic. However, an emergency policy group and our emergency policy procedures should be for all hazards. Will it be, will it be for the emergencies we have been experiencing or a terrorist activity, a hazardous spill, anything of that nature? And so for emergency management purposes, it seems like having a structure in place that addresses that in all instances would be more consistent. And as Chief Jones has mentioned, he can explain more fully as he has explained to me as well.
Chief Jones, you recognize, sir?
Thank you, sir. So just the history, under the Florida statutes, Chapter 252.38, it does give emergency management power to the county government. Under that, it requires that we write a comprehensive emergency management plan. As you're aware, was recently redone. You wrote, you, as the chair, wrote a letter promulgating the new comprehensive emergency management plan in April of 2019. Later that month, in April, on April 15th, the state approved our comprehensive emergency plan and required that we take it to the board. On May the 15th of 2019, that comprehensive emergency management plan was taken to the board and approved. And as I look at the comprehensive emergency management plan, there's no less than a dozen references to the all-hazards approach from the introduction where it talks about all of the response, recovery, and mitigation, be an all-hazards approach. The purpose is that we take an all-hazards approach. The state and federal guidelines recommend an all-hazards approach. And throughout the document, you'll find that instead of focusing on a hurricane, which that's typically what we do because that's most common, we are focusing on an all-hazards approach to emergency management. We've had rain events, we've had hurricanes, we've had riverine flooding, we've had wildfires and burn bands, we've dealt with rent tides, and now we're dealing with pandemic. So we would recommend that you leave the, leave the EPG authority going to the board, but that you would maintain an authority over all hazards and not threats.
Okay, Chief Jones, thank you very much. With that, I'm going to pass the chairmanship over to Commissioner Overman to make a motion. And my motion is in light of the input that we just received from Chief Jones and Ms. Wise, I move that we direct the County Attorney's Office to amend the draft ordinance before us in order to, one, dissolve the EPG, and, two, delete all references to the EPG and the draft ordinance and advertise the ordinance as drafted after removing the reference to the EPG and its authority related to tropical storms and hurricanes, and ask that the board authorize that we have an advertising and scheduling public hearing for August 5th, 2020. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Miller, a second by Commissioner Kemp. Any discussion?
Can I clarify to make sure everyone understands that if this motion passes, this motion passes, the ordinance will be approved and the public hearing on the 5th, that it will effectively result in all emergency powers of the law being retained by the Board of County Commissioners for all emergencies?
Excellent. Commissioner Miller, thank you. Anyone have questions? I'm not seeing.
I'm not seeing a hand.
Actually, I do. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, and thank you very much. I'm really glad we came to this point. As you know, when we first mentioned this, this is where I hoped we would be. I think it's very clean and easy to understand for everybody involved as well as easy to enforce. So I'm really happy that we've, we've come to this point of just collecting everything back at the BOCC. Thank you.
Excellent. Any further comments? I still see Commissioner Smith's hand. I'm seeing no others. I did have a comment to support the motion. I do believe that it is important that the commission actually makes the decisions as we do represent not only individual districts but also countywide. By doing, by moving it back to the county commission, we can have productive conversations with our municipalities on what they need in order to help them adopt policies that make sense for them as they deal with any kind of emergency. And I was concerned on whether there were two bodies that determined whether there was an emergency going on in the document. So I think making our county operate, as many other counties do, makes sense and allows our emergency operations center and representatives to work efficiently to address emergencies. Emergencies, I mean, the definition, emergency, it means we have to act quickly, efficiently, and responsibly to our citizens in order to be able to help them as they deal with a crisis that's occurring in our community, and I am glad to see this going forward. With that, we have a motion, and Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you. This, I'll make this really brief. I am the only one on the board that's continually sat on this EPG board for 10 years, and I think I've witnessed the inefficiencies in the fact, I mean, it's not, I think in, at the first, it came about in a very good way, but I think now as it stands, we, we really need, with our county being as big as it is, we just have to really take more control over the actions. We have the ability to do funding. You know, it's, it's, these are really serious concerns, and I'm really glad that Commissioner Miller, as our chair, has brought this forward because he has sat on the EPG many times also over the last 10 years, I think almost the whole time. But I think it's just the right thing to do. I am sensitive about our municipalities, sensitive about the mayor. She has made comments that she wants to see at the table. I understand that. I think what we should do, and maybe not part of this motion, but consider our county administrator maybe working on MOU or some kind of a relationship document that will kind of lay things out for them to make him feel more comfortable and kind of a part of our emergency management. So those are my comments, but I'm definitely in support of this at this time.
Excellent. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I will just again reiterate, I've thought that this is something that should happen some months ago, totally in support of the proposal, and thank you, Commissioner Miller, for bringing this forward. I think it will save lives and, and save people from, you know, to some extent from filling up the ICU by moving, as Commissioner Overman says, for an emergency. And I'll say that when I first heard the motion before, that I was very concerned that it was separated out for hurricanes. I had anticipated that that might happen, and I just thought that that seemed logistically disastrous to me if something serious happened. I just couldn't even figure out how that that would work. But certainly, I think this is the way that we need to move forward as 66 other counties. We're the only county that doesn't do it this way in the state of Florida. We need to return to this. It was, it's not working well for us at this time, and I think certainly there can be all kinds of ways to make sure that we hear from their respective other jurisdictions, especially Tampa, in terms of what they would like to see, but not through this, not through this function. So thank you, Commissioner Miller, for bringing this back.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized?
Oh, I'll take my hand down.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, please take the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'll take the chair back. Let me, let me also say this to the County Attorney's Office. Let me make it clear that I want the County Attorney to identify the section of the ordinance that would be amended to comply with the board's motion. Okay? Ms. Beck? Johnson?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Miller, and I'm going to ask Paul Johnston to very briefly just identify the, the main portions of the draft that's before you that will be affected, and what we will simply do is delete those, those references before we advertise it. So Paul, if you would very briefly identify the, the primary sections of the ordinance affected for the record.
Thank you. Commission members, Section 2220, the definition of the Emergency Policy Group will be deleted. Section 2221 will delete any references to the EPG's authority for tropical storms and hurricanes in, in Section 2223. Section 2222 also deletes references to the EPG's authority. What was paragraph H in 2223 was taken out and added to Section 2222 regarding the board's authority. Section 2223, which is the Emergency Policy Group's authority, is deleted, and 2224 is amended to 2223. Sections 2225 and 2230 each have been renumbered down one number because of this, and the new section nine removed the reference to the transfer of authority for the pandemic from the Emergency Policy Group to the board, and that is, that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We appreciate that. Thank you very, very much. That concludes our, our special board meeting. It may not have seemed like it this morning, members and ladies and gentlemen, but we did a lot of work on almost three hours this morning. So I want to thank you for your attentiveness and thank you for being here, and thank you for working so hard to get these things done. Ms. Wise, anything else you need to bring forth, ma'am?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beck, anything else, Ms. Beck?
No, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, we'll adjourn. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Good meeting.